Yeah, that's all things to work. First time on this business phone call.
Hello.
Sorry. I'm still waiting.
One minute.
Auburn and Baker.
Here.
Auburn and Kelly.
Here.
Auburn and West.
Here.
Auburn.
Uh, next up on this is education led by uh, Lieutenant Pastor Dave Reganis, the first pastor at church. Someone has Ronson Altman come up from the Catholic school of the past three thirty-two minutes in the flesh.
It's a privilege and honor to be here. Would you all bow your heads and join me in a word of prayer? Father, we give you thanks. Lord, first and foremost, for who you are, Father. You granted us free access, Lord, through your son, Jesus Christ. Father, for ripping the veil to come straight to you to give our petitions and prayers. So, Father, as we conduct business here, Father, as a governing body, Father, let us remind ourselves that you are the head of this body. Father, I pray that as we look in uh, to wisdom and knowledge, Father, that you just sprinkle it with uh, passionate mercy and grace through your Holy Spirit upon each one that is present here. Father, I thank you again for who you have chosen and who you have picked to fill each seat in the governing body here at Green Valley. And, Father, I pray that you use them in a mighty way to do, to do wonderful things to bring you honor and glory, Father. Father, forgive us where we fall short in bringing you the praise that you need. Father, forgive us where we do you wrong. And, Father, may you be glorified in this meeting, at this very moment, and at the end of the meeting. And, Father, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next slide is Google Business. Anything changes tonight?
No changes.
No changes. Move on to proclamation. We have a proclamation from Paige Schultz, who has shown to be an asset to the Green Valley community, her family and friends. Whereas National American Miss American Miss 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 I have a question from Alderman Desi regarding uh, for Dave's recommendations that the city uh, start uh, between softball and baseball needs starting fall last decade.
Does that mean the GBA will pay for the money? I need your back from you. We need a conversation going forward.
I, I have been following the process, we have gone, gone this route for a while. I've experienced a whole, we've experienced here tonight, I've been here a reaction to that, and the Grand Valley Athletic Association. They're off house now, putting an email out saying they're dropping everything, they're not going to do anything else. Just because we're discussing it, considering, they didn't wait to see what they happened to finish this process. So, it makes it very difficult for us to deal with people who work and operate on that, that frame of operation, that management field. I agree that it is a very good program that our youth need, that there has to be something for our youth to do. But when you're dealing with a group of individuals that operate as you've seen tonight, that get upset and don't negotiate and walk out and throw, I'm taking my toys and going home type of attitude. It's time to grow up, be the, be the responsible donor, uh, running the program and doing it. But it is a good program, we have thousands of years that, that have not been, that have been part of it. And it, it puts me in a situation, and I have a representative in my board that wants me to not support this, but I want to do what's best for the community. And if we can't negotiate with the organization and get paid and get something done, it's not just the last five, it's not just in the last three years, one or four years, that there hasn't been a, a separation or an inability to communicate work together. And I'm not saying it's all on one side or the other, but it needs to come to a finalization. And, uh, I guess with that said, I would second.
I got Detective Alderman Arnold, do you need this one with Dustin?
I, uh, Nathan, I appreciate your phone call yesterday. Um, but I have to go along with Alderman Arnold. Um, I've experienced GBA, and I, I will tell you straight out, it was not a very pleasant experience that I had. And it was one year that I experienced GBA. And I, I have actually called TJ on my own, uh, over several complaints that I've received from local citizens over the way GBA was, was handling things among the prices that they were charging for, for ball, for ball, ball games. My son plays on a traveling team, and we play with several parents and children and kids that have been a part of GBA. And I, I hear nothing but negative from these, these clubs. I, I'm sorry, but maybe the people that enjoyed it didn't, didn't share their thoughts, but, you know, when, when they don't from Grand Valley, they, they're like, well, yeah, you know, we, we were just with GBA. And as Alderman Arnold explained, what happened tonight is pretty much what they, these parents are, are receiving on the other end. And, and I was one of them, my son played in your football program, and I had an issue, and I took it to TJ. And I got no, and then on, on the other side of it, with the, the ball, the ball clubs, I've heard time and time again how they pay extremely high prices, but they don't play near as much ball as they do what we're playing now. So, you know, you come in here and say this is a well-run organization, and everything's great, it's, it does have its issues. And, uh, I, I, as Alderman Arnold says, I, I have to do the best for the community, and based on, on what I'm hearing now, I'm going to have to choose to make a move to bring it back in-house.
Do you need this one, Dustin? Okay, now, I'm here, so do you say aye?
Aye.
All votes same time? Mr. James, hold the right. Down or move this. Alderman Johnson? Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Alderman, you. Alderman West? Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, that's five minutes of Dustin, is Grand Valley Athletic Association, Scott and Donald for this one? There are no DCA?
I have a handout here from, um, a summary report in Chicago, also a, an exhibit that's attached to that, exhibit A, that are numbers from our info, coming to them, and very important. And Chief, you want to talk about it, or something?
We think we can go down, it's on the left, everybody's just seeing them right now, correct? So, I'm not, you know, this is basically a summary of what the position we had it. And, you know, we're in a, uh, standstill right now, uh, due to the unforeseen circumstances that occurred. And now we're going to be refilling that position soon. I'm not quite sure, I actually, I would just kind of like to take the questions of what are the concerns?
Well.
Based on the summary, do you really want to go through the reduction? I mean, I can go full, point by point, however, you want me to handle it.
Yeah, um, I'm going to take that, because you and I work very closely on this project, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, basically, Alderman Arnold, do you want to know how they tracked it off, or how that was performing, how it was showing? If you take a look at exhibit A that's attached, you'll see the number of tickets that were issued. So, if you want to talk about one of them, you'll see a, a break in tickets that occurred from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen in Chief Ambrose and Happy, can you confirm, I cannot remember to the last minute, um, when that position actually started, as traffic? Do you recall? For the January fifteenth? So, you'll know.
I don't know, I don't remember as well.
Um, two thousand and four.
Well.
Um, so, we've got, um, so for a good start, when that, because when, um, tickets are written, you basically see about a single flag is where you get access to the sport. So, um, you'll be able to see on exhibit A, that's attached to the last page, the number of tickets issued and then the amount of revenue awarded, uh, which are court costs and hard times that are all together. And are these dollar amounts strictly, is that the full amount that includes those items they go to, you know, just for the food, your work, safety?
And I could get into that real quick on court costs is the only thing, we want to keep all the funds. Say, keep all the funds, court costs, twenty seven fifty broken down, you have primary funds for the state of Missouri, that's seven dollars per cent. Uh, sure, current fund, three dollars, and whole cow, two dollars, and then we have a dollar of bleach training, which we did a total of fourteen dollars thirty seven, I have the court cost.
So, when we look at that, what you're seeing with our net of fourteen thirty seven, that's what you're collecting in the, um, amount on the backside, based upon the fifth year. So, uh, but when we look at it, we're not really looking at the number of tickets issued, and we're not really looking at the revenue, although they're all part of the corporate repair process. Well, what we really wanted to look at was, how did we gauge the community's performance? If you'll recall, the main reason that we, uh, brought in a traffic officer was at the direction of a lot of feedback that needed to be moved out prior, all of them were receiving. And that there were a lot of speeders that we were concerned about, um, and so are, I mean, kind of the kid-populated areas, wanting to slow traffic down, wanting to make a difference for our community, because we're a younger community. Um, so, that's good data, top of the front of the pages. Those highlights, bullet points, those are a lot of things that traffic officers are responsible for. We have seen a reduction in traffic accidents. Uh, the impact, as, as we're looking at, you'll see in the next section, the impacted Grand Valley citizens from two thousand and twelve. Um, you know, we utilize, it shows the number of citations that were issued compared to two thousand and thirteen. And based upon the best estimate that Chief Ambrose has, we believe that that has broken up about forty-five percent of our actual Grand Valleys, and there may be those that have a Grand Valley address, but they're actually out of the name of their shares. And so, to our best estimate, we believe that that has broken down. We also took a look at, um, how this position supports the entire city as a whole. Not just the traffic officer, but where this position also was towards our police department as a whole. So, if, um, that person is on duty, there's a call that comes in, and that, that, uh, law enforcement officer requires backup, traffic officer, person on, on site, and they will supervise that backup. Um, just, and the biggest thing, I think, is, and I wouldn't like to put this at the front, but we're in the China Road, we're based on comments, but it's a comment in the feedback that we've gotten. Um, now, of course, when we have, we have the construction was going on, a lot of people were happy with our traffic officer, because many people were interested in tickets. But the other half of the people that we were growing were happy that it keeps somebody blocking intersections, that, you know, they were holding the control or breaking the law. Um, and a lot of times, the traffic officers are very easy to speak to that. Um, the biggest thing I think I've noticed is since this traffic officer's position has been vacant in the last five, six months, there's a comment that we're getting now, where's the traffic officer, where's that black car? Why isn't there somebody out doing traffic control? We're hearing it from numerous, um, residents, different, uh, communities, our residents. They're concerned about the safety of the kids, especially during the summer. And that, I know that Chief Ambrose is very, very sensitive to that comment, she's.
Sure, I mean, that's exactly what you just said there, you get a lot of comments, go out to the community, various events, whatever. A lot of people will come to me and say, was that traffic officer, um, you know? We're seeing more speeders in our area, and it's not just in a particular part of town, it's all over the town. I mean, it's pretty much anywhere you go. And, and absolutely, we're missing that on the road as well, the officers like that additional body that Sharon spoke about. It's nice to have that person there available for the additional calls. If we do get busy, it's nice to know you have an additional person out there on the road, what have you, dealing with the traffic accidents, which can take up a lot of time. And let the officers focus on the other day-to-day calls, going from disturbance calls, property damages, what have you. So, traffic accidents, I think, it's going to take about hour and a half of your time up, quite a bit of time involved there. So, it's nice to have that person there. And again, the additional comments and whatnot, from the community as a whole.
Yeah, so, and it's been somewhat favorable, um, you know, nobody likes getting caught at the end of it, but that's the whole point, you're getting caught at the end of the law. So, it's been, uh, it's been good feedback no matter what. And the, uh, last part is, is with, uh, we actually have hired an officer for this position, uh, with individuals, and it's an in-house officer that's going to take over the duty of the traffic officer. And, um, that individual starts in the life first. That individual also needs having, um, exposed to additional training, um, related to recognizing suspected drug traffickers and couriers who are often stopped on traffic violations, who have discovered some transport illegal narcotics, and were the first ones on drug trafficking. And one of the things that Chief Ambrose was sharing was the fact that when you are known as a community that is actively involved in stopping vehicles, you end up seeing the reduction in that type of traffic in this community, because they know that you're active. So, not only do you slow down the local traffic from a, as a traffic calming, um, asset, but it's also utilized to be able to use, it, it, it's fingers that reach out to be able to do crime without that. So, in summary, anything else?
Anything?
Uh, for example?
I'm not sure, Ben, what we're looking at there.
Right, I just want to provide a summary of, of our, our perspective. Um, is there any additional questions you have, anything to continue this night, that we're glad to take a look at it? But if you have any additional questions, that's fine, you do a question now, that's fine as well. But, uh, Chief and I both support these programs and believe that it's really worth this.
Anyone have any questions tonight?
I just, uh, one would expect us to interoperate, we'll wait for this for a couple of minutes. When I'm in back review, the information that's been given to us so far, when we put this position in place, it was, um, partly for need, there was some debate on the board as to whether we really needed a traffic officer specifically, or just talk to our officers, they're all traffic officers, we can get right down to it. And I would prefer that the entire force be trained to watch the drug traffickers and so forth, as just one officer. And, you know, it's organizational thing, everybody's trained to do this, you know, you're not putting all your hours on that. If there's actual, if you work daytime, it's not fine, with most traffic, drug traffickers are moving, they're moving each other, but easily, they're like, I, and so.
Maybe, actually, they weren't very sure.
Well, I understand you do, but I'm already in my booth, and I probably have to see. But, um, when I look back at the numbers, given that, that primary group disposition, the industry, they should be able to produce enough citations to be self-supported, because we didn't have a good budget, it was going to be a general revenue, something else, because we were pulling that money over for this officer position. Uh, we were talking about fifteen citations for eight hours, which equate out to about seventy five citations a week. Uh, that's thirty seven hundred and fifty, over fifty weeks, two weeks on vacation. Uh, when you, that happens in one to ten mile open speed limit, when we're talking twenty-six to thirty mile open speed limit, we're talking ten citations in a week, which would take five hundred and fifty weeks, which makes the total of forty-two hundred and fifty citations that this officer is going to put out in a year's time. Uh, those numbers don't bear out in this report. So, if we were talking numbers in excess of two hundred thousand dollars that would be brought into government cost for this officer, while, uh, I know some of the numbers that's heard of lower traffic accidents and so forth. I think a lot that's been done is by the overall force out there, they're doing a better job. I've noticed that other officers, other than the traffic officer, have the key thoughts in doing the job that they're hired to do, and they're doing a good job of it, and I think they step up their effort. This position is not necessary, we don't need to continue to fund an additional position there. The revenue, we were short on it as well, and we're just having, having to generate revenue from this, uh, position. So, with, with the understanding that, well, far short, you, you were looking at the thirty-four hundred and seventy-five price range. Citation was two thousand and twelve, uh, you're looking at forty-six hundred in, in, uh, two thousand and thirteen. We're only seeing a growth of about twelve in ticket. That means we, we fell short by the three thousand citations that this officer needed to go be self-supported now.
Well, in all actuality, Alderman Arnold, before we go any further with, like, the correctness of this a little bit, I understand there may have been higher expectations, and it's always easier to go to, uh, fringe margins, there was some numbers out there. But in the performance of this officer in two thousand and thirteen, they actually wrote seventeen more citations all on their own. Which they have been underperforming by your standards of what you might estimate it. But, and if you take a look at how the revenue grew from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, for the whole year that we didn't have a traffic officer, it grew by well over a hundred thousand dollars, which was more than capable of the position itself. And I don't know if that numbers, how you see this policy, that noise, or.
We estimated, um, what was the development of the situation in two thousand and thirteen? We actually estimated fifteen two thousand dollars coming into the traffic officer, sure, the traffic officer.
Fifty two thousand. Which would.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's more than.
Well, well, what more than that?
That was a conservative number, because in a way that the reports work, there's no way to really determine when, because of the lifetime, you want a ticket written, and what it just costs, and you sort of actually collect that money. It can be anywhere from four to six months later, and you know how many things, and what's coming, and what's going to go far.
You know, if you look at April and May of two thousand and thirteen, compared to two thousand and fourteen now, April, May, you can see the difference there. That's quite, I mean, that's just two months, that can show you quite a bit of difference, when you have one, when you don't.
Well, I, I understand that, that, you know, a lot of that position, traffic issues out here along Main Street with all the construction, that's gone now, that's taken away a significant number of citations, you know, for wider roads, traffic, building, so, and, and, and intersections. I just wanted to be prudent with the money that the citizens give us.
Actually, those papers were dismissed almost every single one, I recall.
When it, when it comes down, I understand their concern, but the way that the numbers actually go out with citations for a traffic officer in the minds of like the right, more than supported this officer, and supports other areas of the general fund. But as I said earlier, it's, you know, we wanted to make sure, A, we're just trying to find the names of them. But on the other side of the coin is also, I think, it's in community matters, that we want to be able to follow and track. And, and those, so there's two different areas that you're working on, and I want to make sure that, that's very well.
When we, when we started talking about, when we take the broad, the, for, for the commission, there were several individuals that came up and, and talked about, around, you know, year and next, there were several individuals on this. True, uh, almost, yes. Um, and most of the seemingly, well, like, all of course, when I'm off of, uh, I think it's not Ryan though, but I'm, I'm here short of emergency. So, maybe we have, we have, we have some rules with off them. Well, and prior to that, we had a number of complaints that were. Well, prior to that, we had a number of complaints of most of the sixteen boats and everything else. I think that's what we're trying to look at, obviously, you want to be sure the officers funded.
Yeah, and you can see from that revenue collected, that just from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, there was about one hundred and eighty-eight percent, you know, eighty-eight percent increase on public, what you've actually reported. So, the revenue from two thousand twelve was two hundred and fifty-five thousand versus those like in thirteen, which were only five hundred thousand. So, in simple math there, it's well, you know, a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
How are we going to make up shortfall of being the check of the twenty-one thousand?
Now, that shortfall is a very big concern, and that's what we're doing is we're removing expenses in an area so that we'll be able to count such as a year. And then the revenue coming in, you have to, and I've been working together to climb where those expenses are and top it.
And if the program doesn't continue, we're definitely not going to get anywhere near that as well, to help out with that. You know, my opinion, my fear is, is there's a recommendation maybe not, not continuing all of this. You know, and I have it in my summary here, you know, when you, when you start something and then you're going to take away, that, I think that's a stain. I don't have community even on the department as well, and we will feel that, you're going to see that impact. And that's going to be, to me, that's unfortunate that that's the case. Because this community is not getting any smaller, people are leaving. They're building out this room, we're going to continue to get people in this, in this community. And people are coming out here to visit us more, and the more we grow, more traffic, we're going to, we're going to see. And there's a lot of opportunities for various programs, such as our, the Jackson County Traffic Safety Task Force. We have all kinds of different programs out there. I don't have time to dedicate just a single traffic, or patrol officer to. They have the traffic officer available, be able to go to those traffic meetings, to understand what is going on out there with the traffic-related community. There's not too many communities, towards what I said, so there's none, towards what I said, that don't have dedicated traffic units. They, they're not just under traffic, they're also separated up trailers. They're taking all the complaints with regard to the parking, the speed issues. If we need to ask somebody, look at different organs for, for parking. As a matter of fact, we got a couple things going on right now, that we are having my, hopefully, the traffic officer look at with regard to different parking issues that we're having in, in the city. You know, and they're, they're going to be able to take those things, and work on them, communicate with the cities that already have these things in place. We want to build it and grow the program, is what I would hope to see, and not dismantle it, and then just absorb it back into the regular patrol lead. And that's kind of, that's a tough call. For me, that's a tough call to swallow, I think, so. And again, we're trying to see that happen.
And that was something we discussed at the time when we talked about this position. It was something that wasn't funded, it was going to be used in our neighborhood. And the selling point was, it's going to be self-sustained. And while the numbers are up here, without an adequate audit of what that officer actually brought in, it's not fair to take what the patrol officers have shut up and done more, and account it to this one position. I think us to the funding that would be used elsewhere, but we could have been talking about trails not getting, supposed to be putting that money from general revenue and adding a traffic officer, that we were short a hundred thousand dollars for them to do, maybe afford trips.
Well, you got, um.
If you're in a general, when in the police, and we put general funds into part, on the various cases and cover projects like that. And so, that's where I'm trying to balance the request and what others are wanting versus what we're trying to do out here. I solely support the officers out there, and I think they're doing a great job. And I think with more direction, as to what our concerns are, that they can watch for those things. And I think the problems, you know, they're, they're fixing the problems. At the point that this officer's, this idea here, this addition got brought up, I had heard a complaint quite a while about people speeding in the neighborhoods. So, it was kind of surprising this office, this position got brought up to me. Because the complaints have gone away, other than the one incident where a child ran through out in the street, and got hit by a car in the neighborhood. That was the only one, and I wouldn't say it was all the child, because of our hit, the ride too fast as well. But, you know, you come out from behind a parked vehicle or a bus or something, it's hard for someone to avoid that, you know, anyway. So, traffic officer's not going to necessarily stop that type of situation. So, just trying to make sure that we're doing the best of the money that we have, and that we're not over volume one tick off, that's the opposite of our organization here with education personnel to beat their safety goals, you know, objectives there. Just trying to do as, as public force has done and so forth, doing more with less. Because our tax dollars have to be a part of it, and I'm not necessarily wanting to keep people driving safer on the street. I don't want to have somebody out there thinking, you've got to give them updates to keep somebody to keep the jobs as well. So, people want to get tickets, they want to get a warning. And I'm not saying officers will do that either. But if, if, if it's something that's possible, you have to take into consideration. It's difficult to really evaluate based off the way that the information is collected here. I knew at the beginning that we were going to be reviewing this as to whether it paid for itself. And that particular officer's activity should have been kept. Right down the line, it's much fun here, how many traffic fines and so forth.
Well, who'd you have as numbers? You know, how many tickets you brought in? Because you know, because you really can't gauge your program for, after one year. Not too many programs out there, I don't think, that anybody looks at, that you only give it one year, and then you're going to make a decision on whether you're going to cut it or not. I can understand, like, if something two or three years down the road, that is based on one year. To me, that's not even a fair decision. You don't get a fair, you don't even get a fair go at it.
And then begin building, that's important. We're just trying to stick to the goal that we set for the program, and then just have, it's been a little over a year, half of the time.
Yeah, and have been able to build that, so.
And actually, we, we had about a year with the position. We have the last few months coming up, so.
I've got a question for you, because, I mean, every monthly, on the lines, at the bottom of this, traffic fines is sixty-two thousand dollars. But the other lines were other than traffic, other than other traffic, nothing right either.
That's a very conservative estimate based on the number of tickets that were distributed.
By that one, yeah.
By that one, they were only two thousand, right team.
Because you have patrol out there, they do write traffic, so you do that combined with both.
But obviously, we can't, we can't support one officer for sixty-two thousand dollars here, now with benefits.
Sure, again.
Hey, well, hey, benefits, cars, fuel, everything else? But still gets expensive, you need to, to, you know, hire and set up a house, you know, and all those things together. I like for it to self-support itself, but in the same token, I don't want to be called a speed trap. Give a bad reputation like that. But there are still complaints, over on Eagle Drive, down on Ryan, we've got these speed bumps back out. They've been watching it, and already mine's, they've been watching it, because we've been several complaints with speeders. And the visibility of around, once you do call and talk to them about complaints, is there better visibility there now, that you didn't have as much before? Understand what I'm saying? You know, when we didn't have the officer, they might be there, but then they get a call and they're gone. But now, as long as they didn't beat their health, they could still be. So, I like to try another year. It's almost self-supporting in itself, but I don't want to get rich off of the year, because I don't want a bad, a bad name brought forward. I think it, I guess, try to keep it one more year, I understand the limitations, I'm supporting.
All we want to add is, we're after talking to Ryan, Chief of Police, certain ways to get, slow people down. We, we talked about the wagon we put out there, the little white box we put out there. We've done this for years, and basically repeating what I said when we brought the traffic cop up. People see it, they look at it, and they keep going. And they, they've done nothing. You know, me, first of all, the safety of our kids and our public overrides any money that we're going to spend on this guy. Yes, we need to keep checking out the overspending, but we have an issue with people speeding up down our streets. You know, based off the little white box, we were having that, we were seeing it at breakfast in the morning, and we looked at that over the years, over the eleven to twelve mile an hour over, and the twenty-five mile an hour down. Isn't that better, right? So, we have a problem with people speeding up and down residential streets. I witnessed this right on Shoreboard, and in front of Alderman Arnold's house, I sat on my deck, and I'd be watched. That turned into, when we had the traffic officer, before we had him, he was walking down a line road, and then when we had the traffic cop, it kind of, you could tell it coming down. And now that he, now we don't have a traffic cop, it kind of got back to the old way of traffic, that people are speeding up way faster than he could be up on a line road. You know, like I said, the money deal, we need to keep in check, but never once do you, over lost your public safety. I mean, we sit there arguing about dollars, you know, how do you put that on, on somebody hit, if I did? I understand, we got to watch, but me, number one, it's public. And, and the time we've had the traffic cop here, officer would be the correct, I guess. I, I've watched, I've watched things slow down. And as far as complaints going away, I, I don't know why you're saying that, because I, I still get phone calls, and I still, I was just out this week, walking and talking to people, and they were asking about the traffic cop being put on their block, and then I have to tell them they don't have one, and they want to walk it. So, I, I see it, unless, the traffic cop, people want a traffic cop. I, that's between the streets being filed properly, and how do we get people to slow down on our residential streets? Probably the two most questions, other than our tax, or the few questions I get asked most, is how do we slow people down on our streets? And I think it's the fact that the tools that we put in, in place, and it's all killing, killing it. It's not about giving, you know, rich or the revenue, you know, yeah, we don't want to get a bad name, but we also got to slow people down, we got to drive a point. And, and I've been asked about, why don't we give them a warning? Well, in my opinion, we have given warnings. We set out, we set out, we set, you got to remember, we spent a lot of taxpayers' money, putting out a little go-kart and a sign on it, and putting up a little white box, to this, 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 this don't put theirself up. So, we got some officers have to do that, and that's, that's taxpayers' money that we're spending, and we're pulling officers off the street to do that for. So, to me, that, to me, them two tools there are insufficient, they just, we tried them, they don't work. And we, we need to move on to something that works, and it's proven that it does work. You know, and, and Alderman's thought, in like, in the chief's voice, one year's not enough. It's like any program, you got to work the buzz out of it. And we had buzz in it, it was just, it was like, it was like business overall, we, we intersected. You know, that was, there was some buzz there, but we're getting straightened out. I, I, I support it, I support it.
Chief, let me ask you, I know one of the day, one of the day, one of the day, staff officers that we have was a school loan. I think you're going to pull them. All right, that, that is just a day, I mean, anyway, I know, but the future, for the continues, to keep that information, have them review this information in the future, we see that, you know, these are like, citations, staff officers writing, and like, do that information. My day is, we'll go to the past, to the future, kind of, be like a blogger, if you'd like to blog, and look at that. This is where we can see what impact we're having where.
It's a matter of, look, see how many total tracks that.
Those are typically a different, like, day, or day. Those are just the other, that, I think the school loans is more.
Well, it can be, we do not judge the traffic that well, it's like, could be. But it's all okay, if your, if your speeders, you know, have forty-five and twenty-fives, and they'll put in a bracket, so. So, we'll know, we, you know, we separate it out, but I'm not sure how it's actually tracking. If yours, if they actually separated from school loans, and regular speeding on any other residential street.
Please tell the rest. All right.
I think it'd be, this objection, I don't give a degree for another year. I think we need very detailed information about how it's been. We get a lot of comments, they're not actually even used. So, I can do very strict criteria, that will be monitored throughout the period, in whatever period it takes, for, for. So, that, a period from now, a year from now, or whatever, we can say about any form, okay, this has been a this, 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 and that.
Are green, or red, or blue, taking the word, where we monitor the street, where the students are going, if that change. So, I think, you know, you said before, that the street level, actually, is not, I don't know. Remember that, our, our, our staff, I don't think that changes. Is he actually reducing speed, or just getting speeders on? It's not, it's not reducing the speed alone, speeding itself, there are questions. Any other questions? So, I'll be giving specific guidance on what exactly, did you want to see, or do you want me to try to come up with some, and share with the board? How would you like that?
I think that's the criteria, we can be developed, come on, and just assess and just go.
One of the might be, we can do, I mean, I don't put down, we have traffic officers, if you were, you know, for you, you know, like, I always say, I got enough to plan on such and such street. You know, you, the traffic officer over there, they make you that, you know, if you get to the area from Oldman or myself, that, you know, we're getting requests for patrol, that making the traffic goes, and see if they are in fact. And, because I got some, I've had a register on the new beginning on the drive, uh, the road a little bit.
I would say, if you have specific areas, one of, like I said, they have to plan off of.
No, I would say, come up with, uh, how you can do it, and how the, how you guys track that.
We are not trying to hide any kind of, anything.
Yeah.
So, I, I do, you need to know what it is exactly you would like to see, because I can think of all kinds of it. And then it's a matter of how, how we're going to administer that. Can we do this, you know, even if they're, or front staff, field, stuff there, separate that out? Can we do it with our, what we have on that?
I think they do, right. The best thing to, 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 to go down that road, you know, like, we're, we're manned with all sorts of things.
We can go back to the original proposal, the question, the ticket thing, the right concern. Speed rights, they were at the end, you know, eleven, twenty-six, over the, over the speed limit. Those are two specific, specific areas. I know there are other things that he writes, such as, uh, parking, you know, parking or, uh, or a, uh, taillight without, or.
Right, 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 we're gonna stop signs, willing.
Yeah, so, you know, it blurs the line, all, you know, he's pulling a guy over for speeding and, right, he's forcing him to put speed belt, light, uh, lights aren't up and, uh, he's got taillight on or something. Now, while those are violations, they still be taken care of, they're not, uh, lubricated by insects that we, you know.
All right, but also with that, you know, when you have that extra person out there and doing that, traffic officer's thinking, you're gonna clear out a lot of your warrants, people that are wanted, you're gonna find a lot of drugs. You're gonna do a lot of those different things, which I can, I can show you numerous examples of an officer doing that. That's who cleared a lot of other things, just aside writing a speeding sticker. If we can get a speeding ticket and you can get a guy off the street for a fifty thousand dollar warrant, felony warrant, it's a pretty good deal. Well, absolutely. However, when you, when you're focused on the traffic though, you're gonna get a lot more of that. Because you're not gonna find those as you're going to a call and you're writing a report on property, you're just not gonna find a warrant. But if you're out stopping vehicles, you're gonna find those. So that person's gonna have a lot more on the specifics, I mean, heavily, with clearing out those warrants and all that, just so.
Okay, is that, that is an important criteria, and that needs to be.
Well, that's just an additional, there's, there's numerous, but that's, that's absolutely a plus.
And it may, and it may be a thing where, if he comes across the mess, have a warrant, set him, turn him off, or, with that person, he gets one of the other officers to deal with it or, uh, higher violation or a warrant. And they take care of it, that's what a law, he stays on the road to do what he's doing.
Actually, they did that quite a bit.
Okay, so that's, you know, that, that's something you haven't managed.
Yeah, absolutely. They would come out there and pick that person up, bring him back to deal with it, and he might stay out there and bring him to do what he's doing. We did that quite good, actually.
What have they done on this? Have you cleared it or are you gonna come back up with, what you think you can track and do additional feedback at that time?
Sure.
And also?
Yeah.
Okay, and on the next item, which is new business. First item in new business is request approval for wine tasting for Varegas Corporation new business at Discount Lick, right, folks?
Uh, Mayor Ward, we just need, uh, certification from you on, uh, orientation allows a restaurant to have a restaurant bar license. They will have a license for sales and are still do not specifically require any kind of license for eating. We spoke with, uh, we took about this and we still see an issue with it, but, um, I don't have the authority to prove licenses in general and specifically we need to be able to turn that, so we just need to turn that thing off.
Is the license scheduled weekly wine tasting or do we just wondering how I can taste wine?
They have not been specific on that, I don't think that they're very sure. I think we're waiting to see how it, um, progresses and, and we'll probably have the authority to be as much as possible.
Didn't the chain have something similar to that, or the taste of the wine?
They did, and they have special permits for that, um, in, in common city properties, they get special permits, um, from the city for that particular, and, and it's just a specific timeframe, this is an ongoing respect, um, that, that is different from the license that is, uh, to you. The one that is required towards the chamber, and they think at that point, it just sort of, it's just a big timeframe. Much like the, the special vendor, so there.
Do you recall what Harry was doing, or she was doing?
She actually, uh, Seaguard actually was, uh, was, uh, they were an actual bar. When they received her license, they had an additional license that they requested for sale by the drink, as opposed to taking. She did have tasting, but the sale by the drink was, um, on the conversation that.
I know that before, she had a tasting for the bar.
And that was, uh, how it brought to our mention, actually, so, um, appropriately, and that's, that's how we get that problem.
I, I know that state statute, I don't know what they have for tasting for this, because traffic officers will say there are wineries that have, in rural areas and in communities that have a lot of tasting, and it is on a limited amount, it's on a, like, tranquilization, you know, if you want to be in a situation where.
Right.
But, uh.
The, the state's actually contacted me on this, because they are, have, are requesting approval through the state as well. And frankly, they're just waiting on approvals and not to go ahead and issue a, um, their particular license. We just don't have anything else of it defined, uh, tasting specifically, they're going to correlate with sale by the drink.
I know that the grocery store has some tastings on, for other bases, that are traditions. But maybe an issue that we want to look into, does that the guidelines, we're not, we're not allowed, you know, uh, lots of us blow over a delivery by drink.
That's a fantastic point, we actually have that discussion with the board meeting, um, to discuss that, because we will have one. They were just diligent enough to bring it to our attention and ask us for permission to do. At this point, finding some code that we have.
Can't we put restrictions on this, about how we do for improvement?
That's a legitimate question.
No. My thing is, uh, something like, our, our portal brought up, when you go like, wine or whatever, it's like, okay, you can have three or whatever, uh, you know, they give you the amount, not that they would do this here, but I don't want to turn it into, you can have full, full glasses.
I'm sure there's stipulations on the state license that they're receiving, I just don't know the specifics of it. So I'm assuming that there's stipulations at that level and the county level as well, I just don't know. Since they have a defined tasting license for tasting, it's got, I'm hoping there's stipulations to it, I'm sure.
Well, we said something in parallel with safety.
So need approval list, I think?
That would, that would be okay, yes.
So, I think it must be an improvement based on, it's parallel with the county, state, the local list. I have a motion. Okay, so, okay, motion over, talk to the, the, on the paper, all right? Need a testament on that? I don't have a testament, so. Okay, see done, all fair to die, all both same time, okay? Okay, next item in this is request approval for license two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, all intensive. They got two to one in mind.
Not necessarily, um, we receive, well, we have confirmation from all the other businesses and have, uh, no motion to, uh, with the major. Do you have questions on any of that?
Okay.
And I think I'd like to say that I'm in there. Some of these businesses do not have their state or county licenses out of what yet. And we will not issue those licenses until they're, they're, um, this happens every year. We're all on that same timeline, so we all kind of play that, that now game of who gets what license wins. So all the businesses are aware that they won't be issued a city license until we see their state and, um, most of the time what we do is they require it, we can issue a letter to the county or the state, state that the board has approved their license, uh, to use upon, if you're using those, you know, other required licenses. So, um, as soon as that happens, we usually get it all wrapped up within, um, this time of year, the person like, or, and all the licenses that, um, require them to use. So, uh, depending on the data.
All right. So they've met all our requirements, uh, for, for the licenses that we're working with, taxes are paid, uh, what, like, is required for them to be our license process? And everybody here's, that goes back to.
Have we had any, any concerns, DMs, your targeting, the, 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 the?
Not that I can make aware by the chief, he does have, uh, authority to find out on all these, we discussed, you know, the, um, the warrants.
So, no concerns, replies, and, and, okay. Do we have anything else, can we give these, to the board? Now, we're gonna give a motion to approve the license for the listed businesses. Question one, Scully, back second.
All right.
Second one, Shaker, need additional discussion? See done, all fair to die.
Aye.
All both same time, all right? All approved.
Mayor, Board, staffed theater is condition of this planet application for the operation of the pet cremation facility, pet facility relocation. Basically, we look at management, have there to get directly made it where it has around currently most research and the area was for tall volume amount of the building in there. And with that, staffed table taken to main commission, I wasn't sure who was the holding position, should have been out for five years, process of containment of the conflagration of the building and current future creation should not produce any smoke of the EPA. Currently, it's busy in Blue Springs, general location is basically Woodchapel and Duncan. He had a copy, probably doesn't know it's there, I guess really probably anybody that actually do it was there before she got with DJB, if it was there when they actually put in. So, that's kind of a good thing with it, is that it actually is in use right now, so it is one of the UPOC, it's not kind of like another traditional use application that we've had where people have questions on, you know, can't really do it until it's actually in place. So, with that, right now, they're leaving the place of Blue Springs, they look at Grand Valley to build a new facility that they were on. With this, Moxy Festival, which is another company, the Alvin, would be housing and cleaning structure. We have a unique request, so we have Ryan Wade and Ben So, front ask, we're going to give you the presentation. I don't know if that had a lot of questions, first brought to us, I'm sure you've got to do. I don't know if this is a request ever come before, the board, so hopefully after the do the presentation, if you have any questions or not, I'd be happy to answer those, and I'd be happy to answer anything else. We also have David Ward here with us, great teeth here, he'll be one of the actual builders of the building, and we'll deal with that later, so if there's any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. Ryan Wade, the National Pet Control Agency, pretty good, yeah, it's just, uh, radio by southeast temperature after springs. We, uh, forgive, there's a little bit of comedy involved in this, but we, we realize it's a sensitive subject for a lot of people, so we like to bring a little bit of humor into it. So, if you guys have any questions, it's always, it's great, uh, put a smile on our faces. Basically, right now, we're in operation in Blue Springs, this is a four-year event, trying to get this put together. Every city, or every major metropolitan city of Kansas City has anywhere from three to fifteen crematoriums, pet crematoriums in operation. Right now, what we do is we run Monday through Friday, eight AM, six PM, Saturday, eight to twelve, and we do pet cremations, we sell burns, wood pet related, these types, things like that. The report information, no, report is the unit that you actually cremation in, we use BNL cremation systems. The reason we went with BNL, we're out of Florida, is the possible line unit that you can get manufactured at this point. So, it's all run off of the system instead of time, it's based on the temperature, and so, if your computer run, it's the BLP 500 being, we can run 500 pounds of animals in the unit. You're talking 132 inches long, 66 inches wide, and 96 inches tall, natural gas, we have 240 volt running into it, we can burn 150 pounds per hour, and the requirements for the air via the Department of Natural Resources has to have an air inlet capable of passing 2500 feet of heat per minute. The maximum room temp next to the report, my code, report cannot increase the ambient room temperature by more than 60 degrees. You guys will also come over anytime, we have a lot of people that come in and bring their pets in, they come in and see me, and call the time, anytime you want to come in and that, but, yeah, it doesn't get hotter than 60 degrees around the minute. Overheating risk, BNL is the only manufacturer that utilizes fully automatic system based on the temperature of the equipment. As the temperature increases, the system adjusts, so it'll blow more air in, cool it down, or it allows it to heat back up. There's three different types of burners in it, there's an after burner, a cremation burner, and ignition burner, so they can fire at different times to keep the heat right at 60 degrees. Yes?
I'm calling, thank you.
The stack right now is three feet above the building, so it'd be the same here, we just have three feet of the building. Yeah, we'll show you some pictures of the building, so. So, it never allows it to overheate, it overheats, we just shut it off, and then all the internal gases and smoke stay in the front, and not the material that's going out. The stack construction is made of steel plate, this steel plate, wholly lined with three inches of insulated castel material like concrete, it's detect temperatures of excess of 2500 degrees, and there's no way of the cash fire.
So, the main difference between a cremation unit and a fireplace is items that are placed inside don't create creassol, which is typically what causes chimney fires, so that's not something that's quite.
Uh, this is the proposed building, Ben, you want to explain this?
Yeah, so basically, this would be camera drive, that is, and then these two cities, the front corner, block 25, fasten on the other building, it just gets big up, it's really seem to have an access for customers off a camera, and then certain sites that could buy the building for a ten percent. And this is the side of the building, this was how the Moxy pest control done the building, and you can see the inside. Do you have room plan for future use as well? Right now, this is representative of what we have right now. So, we have, um, basically an entry office, if you have a viewing ground where customers can turn in, like this pet cremation, we do an actual function, taking purpose arrangements, stuff like that. So, the area of the users is where the law can be right here, you know, the fat, you know. Uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Um, the reason I got involved in doing this was for the need, I looked at many different cities across the nation, but one thing that we found, as owning a pest control company, we go to these homes and it seems like everybody has a dog or dogs and cats. Thirty-nine percent of households own at least one dog, of those households, 60% own one dog, 28% two dogs, and 12% three dogs or more, approximately 78 million, 200,000 option in the US. Cat, 30%, 3% of households own at least one cat, 86 million, 400,000 own cats. Uh, there are thousands, and I promise you, if you looked into it, there are thousands of pet related businesses in the Kansas City metro area. In Grand Valley alone, you've got Crane Veterinary, and you've got Grand Valley Veterinarians, and you've got several groomers, um, so there's definitely for the pet related side of the industry. We will generate further revenue for the city of Grand Valley for payment taxes, people from all over, and this is true, I just had somebody from St. Joe on today, um, but basically, people from all over come down and use our facility up range revenue in the city as well.
Let me ask you, I know last two animals I've had to have cremated, they've been taken from the vet, are people allowed to, our last one had to have like the house, like the vet, the vet, the race, do people deal with winter animals?
Absolutely.
To you directly?
Yeah, right now, what we have is, the majority of our revenue is going to come from veterinarians, but, and we're set up with Grand Valley right now, hopefully Crane shortly, um, so we do get walk-ins, but the vast majority is set up through the veterinary facilities, so. Common concerns with pet cremation, and if you guys have concerns, please voice them, but the smoke from the tall smoke stack will cause a haze. Due to the internal after burner in our cremator, there's no visible smoke, it won't be emitted from the stack, and the stack is only, I just said, three to four feet above the roof height. If anything comes out, it's a steam, it was like that kind of heat wave, and that's all that we're talking about. That's currently the stack right now, from the back of the building, and we had to stand quite a ways back to get that angle to get that picture, you can't see it when you're standing within 10 feet of the building, uh, three feet is, it makes it pretty hard to see the stack. Uh, the whole area could smell like burned animals. I remember growing up, we knew when the cremator went off, actually, it was called incinerator back in the day, because you could smell the pets burning, and it was pretty gruesome. Uh, nowadays, with the new equipment they have, that is absolutely normal, avoid the piss of after burning chamber. If there is a smell, which, when we open the unit to stir the bones or the remains, cremains as a home, you may get a smell, and the smell is that a part of it, so. I don't know. Um, this, this is one of the biggest, uh, things that I think is important for all of us to understand, uh, if you had like a Burger King in the area, on the far right-hand grid, um, at 100 hamburgers per hour, you see the yellow stack there, that is the emissions from a Burger King, whereas to the far right, that little tiny blue, uh, grid is what our cremator put out. Trucks driving by on the highway, residential fireplaces, all of that put out far more than what we have. Okay? It's going to sound like a jet engine whenever the crematorium is turned on, the decibels, 55 decibels, I'm talking louder than fishy kind of decibels right now, like running a This is our machine, running.
Some reason without fly by the head of the.
How many employees do you have in this building?
Me right now, um, and I'll, I'll actually, oh, I'll tell you. The reason I got into this was, I had a buddy that was doing residency here for 14th surgery, he went on a scout camp out with somebody, and this person told him that his hunting budget was $250,000 a year, and he asked him what he did for a living, and he told him pet cremations. He now, uh, has, I think he's at 15 employees, that obviously is supporting that sort of language, and because we had the social link coming from the Moxy side of it, we're in the side of it, we're getting the cremation side of it. Ben runs the Moxy side of it, this is a lot for me to kind of put my focus on the cremation side of it. So, we anticipate, we've only been in operation for one year, and we're actually within the next two weeks will hire another second employee, so we figure within three to four years, or within five to eight. Okay, I just put, uh, a 48 pound fire burner, uh, the after burner's on, and the cremation burner's on, it also had a black bag with it, uh, so you can see that there is also a bit of black smoke, or gray smoke, or any smoke, okay, kind of on the stack. I'll go ahead and show you that, uh, pet, pet cremation, yeah, I'm running. If you can hear it. Right, if you have that, you can hear 1600 degrees in there. Yeah. Sixty. Can you see kind of the picture of this, and the steam is for a long. Bye, those BNL. The major concern, or the reason we want to bring it here is, we would, Blue Springs allowed us to do it there, there was a facility right next door, a vacant block, uh, we were going to build there, and because of the runoff requirements that they were going to require, it was costly for us. We've done business in Grand Valley for years, nine years under the Moxy Pest Control, we love Grand Valley, we've come here all the time, just wanted to be a part of the community as far as, we're friends here, and we're just buying a lot, a lot here to build itself, so, we want to be tied to the community. Our pest control side of it, we house 22 employees, uh, so there's quite a large number of people that we get to the pest control side of it. If there isn't a facility here, local, um, Grand Valley, Blue Springs, those guys, they actually got their shop to the summer, so they send it to our building. Uh, just so you guys understand, 50 decibels is quite a suburb conversation home, um, 60 is a conversation in the restaurant, their office, background, they say the air Uh, I can only imagine the kind of eyesore of the crematorium will be in the neighborhood. We are committed to be an attractive addition to the community. On that north end of the building, we're actually building kind of a sit garden, or what do they call it, memorial type garden, maybe just go a place that will stuff it up there, but that can, um, sit and ponder. We are going with modern looking buildings, that's why we want to go brand new, we're adding landscape, shrubs, and then we're going to make it, make it fashionable, opposite of heat. Uh, again, there's the exhaust stack. This is a current, on that, on, you see this garbage can on, on the south end of there, that road behind it is actually Woods Chapel, and on the north end is Duncan, and we've never heard anybody ever say that they can see the stack. This is the current building, uh, custom cruisers, yeah, not far from where we're looking at, the current stack is on that building. Uh, the unit we run, that's the door on the left-hand side of the black portion, that goes up, we put the pet in, the cremains actually come down with the box down below, we just break them out, and then the whole unit is QAS there. Up on the top of that unit, if anything is to ever go on, where it's low temp or high temp, that alarm goes off, it's loud, we know that, they can run, see this alarm. That's the stack on the left-hand side, on the top, that runs up through the ceiling, and that's the length of the unit, so.
Right here on the smoke stack, there's a hole, um, the unit itself actually had a laser system that shoots through the smoke stack, it measures what the color cavity, the thickness of the smoke coming out of the unit, so this is just the port goes through the roof, it measures itself, so if there is smoke, it makes adjustments with the after burner, adding air, creating a clearing, so it's a small amount, it's regulated about, so if the heat gets broken, maybe that thing, the vacuum, it's up for us, it's a technical proof, shut it off.
And yet, it shuts off, it goes in time. Uh, will there be planes or glowing smoke, uh, stack visible after dark, and that's because of the heat, 1500, 150 degrees, uh, is that a possibility? Uh, no, because of the materials that we're using, the lower portion where the after burner is, that part will heat up, but the top portion doesn't heat up. Uh, I don't want to see how many corpses is going to drive by, uh, that's why we've added garage doors where we can actually drive in, and that's what we currently do, you saw the truck back up to that garage door, we actually are going back into the unit, we have freezers inside the facility, straight from the truck, freezers, or straight from the truck. Uh, the pet ashes are going to be dumped in the trash. Dignity and respect is our motto. We have a horse facility just out there on Culver, 50 acres, that a friend of mine has allowed us to take those ashes of cremains, and we actually have a processing unit where we can pulverize it down to literally just ash or dust, and we go out and every six months or so, we just check those out, we'll use this horse facility, so. A crematorium has no business anywhere near residential area. Uh, when I looked at this, I'm from the Las Vegas area originally, the reason we figured this would be allowable, especially in Kansas City, is that several of the units in Vegas are actually run on strip mall. We've got a dental facility, crematorium, Chinese, LA, excellent, so, uh, we can show you, this is Emus or on Kansas side, they're more human, but they also do cremations for humans. You can see the front of the unit, or the facility, they're right next door to neighbors. The smoke from the crematorium contains mercury, that is true as human, because of the heat, that's pretty, you know, mercury. Uh, there are already enough crematoriums in the area, that is not true. Denver has population 2.5 million, there are actually nine crematoriums in Denver now. Las Vegas, 1.9 million, there are 13 crematoriums there, this, I was putting this together back four years ago, so. Uh, St. Louis, 2.8 million, there are nine crematoriums there. Kansas City, uh, 2 million, there are five, and two of those are city-run organizations, so there are three, um, individual crematoriums in Kansas City. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions, government?
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I have a question, I have a little, sorry, I was just throwing in this next question.
Fire department, they have to give us the okay on, and actually, the Department of Natural Resources is kind of on the end of things, so. Yeah, actually, maybe surprise. Do you have that video? Has there been a public hearing out there, anyone here who wishes to speak for again? I have to come forward and give their name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Jenny Jones, uh, I'm going to call to you, I'm sorry, what does the address, it's just being, is it for, is it a softball field, correct?
Well, it doesn't currently have an address, it's an actual building, it's on the north side of like 70, uh, it'd be.
So, it's.
1300.
Correct.
No, it's, it's, the area, they can use that anymore, they, or they use that, they used to do with softball.
Yeah, fastball, uh, the sports facilities in the building, they were using that softball field there.
I think I left a softball game earlier tonight, as an umpire, as softball commissioner. I am thoroughly disappointed at the vote earlier tonight, because we have 25 hundred people present, 50 people come tonight, that still were not prepared by the Grand Valley Park and Recreation Department. This program has been instrumental in a single mother, me, raising my children. I actually started raising my children out of the Grand Valley Park and Recreation Department. What you should be doing, and mind you, admirable, I, my, my mom's pet is on my piano for this day, pet cremation is very important thing, not even kidding, elder, back, whole nine yards. What you don't understand is the Parks Department is still equipped, and tonight, tonight, we canceled games because they couldn't even get the deals correct, did not. Sorry, my chance.
Well, I mean, is that, I mean.
No, I'm just saying that where you were.
That, that, that field is not a city-owned field.
Yes, it is, it's under contract too.
David, is that a field?
Not, it's, up there, this particular side field is a private field.
That's particular one, what I'm telling you is, the Parks Department is mismanaged, and all of a sudden, you're feeling what could be essential growth. Grand Valley Athletics Association has experienced the.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with the.
Can I ask for a re-vote, can I ask for anything, a reconsideration of the order, can I, excuse me, can I ask for a reconsideration of the order at a future meeting, please?
Yeah, you can go back to future meetings.
No, can I ask for a reconsideration of the previous vote tonight at a future meeting?
You can go back to future meetings and answer that, but right now, we're moving on from that, we're on the public hearing, which doesn't revolve around the media discussion. Well, I'm saying, they, they, they already made that.
Do you want me to petition the board? Do you want me, how do I make this happen, because I'm telling you, when.
I mean, you took some contacts, your aldermen, uh, come to the next meeting, figure your other comments, those are your avenues for, for having room back up.
In all fairness, as a board, tonight, this decision hurts a lot of kids in Grand Valley, and whatever maneuver the Parks Department pulls today by not considering your deals was unforgivable and should be looked into. The only, one of only two deals ready to go, and Mr. Davy's daughter playing on it at a meeting.
Mayor, I'm sorry, the meeting is out, board.
I'm done.
Anyone else wants to speak for against the, of the project? All those up here. Yeah, that's up under the orders.
Mayor moves to step, Bill 14.
Bill 14, under the banner of pending chapter 215 offenses, in Article 12 miscellaneous offenses, adding section 215 by 70 aerial luminaries.
Uh, Mayor, Board.
Uh, Mayor, board, that was approached by C J C.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, how did you go?
Get this thing on stage. Mayor, move this excess bill, fourteen ten, first first reading, bring it back for a second.
As long as Arnold's approved bill, B fourteen dash ten, first first reading, bring it back by a pile of words, second reading, try a second. Second all the way.
Mr. Robby, do you have?
I was really excited about it. Um, that was approached by C J C. They're called a lot of different things, um, Chinese, sky lanterns, flying lanterns. But basically, what you say, usually there's a group of people that are doing it for a number of different reasons, but basically candles lit, and, uh, smoking stuff. Typically, they, hopefully, they burn out. The risk is they might not, and they'll come back down at some point. To catch up to that fire hazard. Independence Blue Springs have already passed similar ordinances. Martin Blue Springs being very similar, uh, when you say municipal code or full-size code, so the infection numbers are almost identical. But basically, we're bringing this as kind of a precaution. We don't want to be the city to have that incident where an incinerator, or a fever, or someone starts on fire, and they may lose or something, and that is, I bet you're doing it. Trying to be a little proactive here with C J C, uh, the commander, what's the intent on the Blue Springs? Kind of their whole district is kind of the same. Because of that, can I get asked, uh, any questions for them? Pretty strict board on, on the issue.
I have a question for Chief, I'm not a, um, I'm a chief. Um, is this. Sorry, back and forth. Uh, is this needed for the Fourth of July weekend?
It's not, no, it wasn't geared towards the Fourth, it was just a general, like, more and more people are wanting to use it for weddings and celebrations. And because we're trying to follow suit, like, Mr. McLeod said about staying, our whole district remaining the same, we just, that's why I proposed it, or ask if you guys are looking at it.
I ask because, um, this tonight's the first reading, the second reading will not be in the next meeting, and we're trying to correlate this over the Fourth of July fireworks.
No, not specifically to this Fourth, just in general. We wanted to stop them before they become a problem. I'm not a Fourth of July or, we've given a lot of calls about U S fire, I can't be so.
I, I, I don't know about the Fourth bill, but. I, I, I sat last year and just watched this house burn on the Fourth of July by inches. I wouldn't have a problem with anyone then celebrating, I would do the Fourth of July. I mean, Blue Springs, I'm, there's going to be, in fact, Fourth of July, correct?
Blue Springs Independence just finished theirs. Blue Springs actually did theirs last, and then Independence just finished theirs, about a month ago. We look at it as the same as a bottle rocket. Bottle rocket goes up, doesn't have quick to consume, the sparks can come down. And while the argument with those that sell sky lanterns is it consumes and goes out, we don't know where they're going. When we had the hotel or the apartment fire two years ago, we're fighting the fire in the third floor of a hotel, or of an apartment building, while these things are going over us. So, it's, it's just, you're setting a flame into wherever, we just, obviously, we don't want a fire.
Because, we don't have any inspection before. All the local, the bill to sell them would Fourth of July, right?
I know.
I plead the fifth. How would we be fair to, I mean, so far, to be the, the Fourth of July, I'm sure they're already buying their product. I mean, I agree, they're definitely a fire hazard, because on the blue side, you know, how do we be fair to the fireworks stands that are already buying their, their product? I mean, I'm assuming they can take it back, I don't know how that's not a fire.
We do inspections of all the tents in our district, and last year we had twenty-three. Out of those twenty-three, we found a few that had things that they weren't supposed to have by state ordinance, and we told them to take them off the shelves. So, I, I don't, to answer your question, they probably have bought some of their product. I don't know how they would handle that, most of the distributors will take back. It depends on how the contracts are.
I'm trying to represent the chamber, if you can, that will be, how does that work?
Can you repeat the first part, I can't hear you.
I'm not that bad representative of the chamber.
You do, alright.
How, how does that work in regards to, say, a fireworks stand that already purchased the city was to outlaw them? Would the distributor be able to take those back?
No. Oh, we would be stuck with them, and the other ten would be stuck with them as well. What? We didn't sell them last year either, and I don't recall them being on the sheet this year. I mean, I can double check.
So if they're buying, or buy buying, like, the year or.
Yeah, I would imagine they're getting, wholesalers, yeah.
Well, the other issue, Mr. Mayor, is they can be sold, they're not considered by state ordinance or state laws of fireworks. So they can be sold by.
Yeah, I've seen them at like Dollar General before.
Yeah. So, again, it doesn't go back to just the tents. They can be sold all year long because they're not considered an actual fire.
Yeah, I, I agree with what the mayor said, and I just want to be fair to the fireworks stand. And they should have noticed that they've already bought them, they're in stock, so. I don't know, maybe we reach out to the fireworks stand and see where they're at, before we work too long. Go, we got three, two, two.
You want them to stay on your list.
So, oh, we have to check the other, now I, I totally don't want to. Well, I'd, I'd have to look at my list too. I'm just thinking of last week if you're going to sell it.
How does that work, if you want to, if you have to go first time first, and then you know.
So you could vote on this first time, and then.
Somebody wants to take a motion, put that.
Then leave it at that.
Did any discussions then on the first reading of the light? If they want to, they can, then the agenda, they add it the second time, or vote first time. Okay, did any discussions then? All fair to the day, aye?
Aye.
All votes in time?
Six zero first.
Have those longer Johnson, who put bill B fourteen, to the initiative, put bill, bill B fourteen dash ten on for a second reading tonight?
Try a second.
Second all the Arnold? Any discussions on the motion to the initiative?
I'd like to hear the comments and rest of the debate, as far as, you know, the other fireworks stand may already bought them. I don't, I don't mean, I don't, I don't mean to be sarcastic, I mean, the Arnold Johnson. I'm asking a good question that, that, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't like what you, uh, you throw at me.
I mean.
Well, there's no reason that, that we tolerate. I'm asking a legit question because we have a business that has investments, not even a product, man. And I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, be fair to them, and I'd like to know what was the point. You give your opinion, but you don't have to give my.
I'm gonna get mine now, I, I sat last year watching this house and saw inches, there's not some of a man laying on the backside house. I don't know, I tell you, we heard fire in five four one, I thought, oh, it was a decent land, or it's probably made of some. All the Arnold's probably, since the, whether it was given about the danger.
I agree with you, you're pretty familiar with this guy that you're managing, where this one was about, or the campus was about.
Did they burn, I don't know what, how long they burned, if they burned.
It, it, their design is supposed to be self-consuming, but when it's stirred up, possible on a pad, and burns the streethouse, and that's quite probable, that's after, and, to wait, you know, summertime around Fourth of July, that's the biggest concern, which is they're driving. Got into the heat, you know, right, stacked up, they have a lot of tall grass, and I, I, a lot of grass fires. So, this, this big fire, just around here around, in the day, probably, once you see what it's got, you have no idea where the heat from. You know, this kind of, it's like a lot of fireworks, you know, you're up here.
My, my concern is, I, we understand the concept, that fireworks, you know, there's some way to even. You heard, uh, we have to go hold a family, a family to find out whether they.
Use that beloved, though.
Yeah, and to, I don't know, as far as the purchasing and all that, I don't have the pathway. It was dealt with first, so it's tough, had to go in that, you know, if I recall, they trade that, trade whatever, get that. So, that, is that, all the vendors, did you trade, did you do that? That's in the past. I would, I would have to talk to my, my, the people that we buy fireworks from, I, I won't be able to get ahold of him right now. I don't think it would be a big deal, I mean, if you're going to prevent a sale, but you need to make sure that you contact all the retailers here in town, because it's not just going to be us that sell them. You know, you'd have to contact the tranches, you'd have to contact the dollar store, make sure that they're aware of it too, because it's not the fireworks. It's just, it's commonly used at the Fourth, and it's commonly used at weddings too. No, I, I, you know, I'd say that. And I, I appreciate you looking out for us, and I'll certainly look into it, I just, an answer I cannot provide. Well, I, I totally agree that there are, there are fire hazards. Oh, I agree too. Hands down, I totally agree. I'm just, just concerned for our vendors, what they're going to be out, is my, my concern. You're probably looking at hundreds of dollars at the most. Really? Like I said, I don't know nothing about fireworks. So, I, I don't, I don't think you would, I don't think you would give much, except for the rumble from people about it, if you said, hey, cancel.
You have all that we take on the motion to the initiative? Not all fair to the initiative, add second reading, aye?
Aye.
All votes in time?
Six zero, what should amend? Second reading, bill B fourteen ten is the ordinance two three three two, which is an ordinance pending chapter two fifteen offenses, article twelve miscellaneous offenses, adding section two fifteen five seventy, aerial luminaries, second reading, ordinance two three three two. Mayor, move this excess bill, fourteen ten, for a second reading, make the ordinance twenty three thirty two.
Have those along Arnold's approved bill, B fourteen dash ten, for a second reading, make the ordinance twenty three thirty two, try a second. Second, second all the company. Do this move discussion? See none, all fair to the day, aye?
Aye.
All votes in time?
Arnold?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schaper?
Yes.
West? Six zero, Mayor. Bill, will B fourteen dash eleven, first reading, ordinance proven, additional use permit, allow aspects of pet cremation, to operate a pet cremation facility in East Kansas City industrial park. First reading, bill B fourteen dash eleven.
Mayor, move this excess bill, number B fourteen eleven, for its first reading, and bring it back later. For its second reading, I have one.
I have votes along with the steps to approve bill, B fourteen dash eleven, for its first reading, bring it back by a pile of words, second reading, try a second. Second all the company, in session?
I have a question. Um, one of the statements you had named was that of the modern facilities. I'm curious, what does a modern facility look like?
Cool, it's, it's really cool.
You know, everywhere else we all, they're visually aided, can you not.
It looks somewhat, it looks like that, but we, yeah, it's really cool.
The difference, the difference being from the building that we're in now, just a full metal, real shed, to something that has spucko on the front, and also the side. When you go in and have a really nice home you built, kind of, kind of like, not a funeral home, but just a nice, uh, you send thick carpet, like.
Like walk into your house.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice.
You have all that we think? See none, all fair to the day, aye?
Aye.
All votes in time? Six zero first. Third ordinance, third ordinance, uh, next time then we have previous citizens regarding. Oh, yeah, just let that previous citizen down. Uh, previous citizens, we have two thousand fourteen, three grand, I deploy a handbook.
Uh, Mayor, board, I just want to discuss the issues that you mentioned about Jenny, where can you vote? Uh, we had sent out, or provided the information to you, and we made twenty second and fourteen, and, um, thought we could kind of button this up and, and put the handbook, um, ironed out, so we can read it through and, uh, tour and play. So, um, really, I'm just wondering, before, any questions that you may still have, or if you have any concerns, and we can discuss those at this point.
I know that one of the things we talked about were the master degrees.
Yes.
We came to a new kind of conclusion on the remainder of those.
I never received any feedback on those information I provided, because for a sheet that was given, um, kind of had a cumulative, um, response from areas throughout the city, the very small and large cities of Illinois. Um, discussed me, they had offered tuition reimbursement for amateur degrees, and it's kind of split down the, um, ultimately, what we received was basically the feedback that is demonstration of that particular city or that agency. So, um, to help you none, that's supposed to happen.
I know that was one that she brought up, and, I guess, that's how they feel about her. I don't see any of the cities that were full, reading that thing, they had a dollar seventy seven backdoor. And I think that's been running on things like that, some of the cities aren't doing the, the racial thing on.
I don't know, uh, I don't really answer that. The only creation we pulled regarding the cities that were, uh, that were calling for requests, was the population of the city, maybe to kind of size them to Grand Valley, um, in terms of their tax base and things, but I'm just not, I'm not aware.
I'm, I'm just saying, and, and, good saying, not all, it is that we have extremely high tax levels, and we have to, like, spend all the way up to dollars.
I do agree with that, but I will also add a caveat to that, and remind the board again, that when you look at your tax levy, uh, breakout, that the vast amount of your tax levy is not in your general fund, uh, operating, uh, levy, it's in your debt service levy, that is set by the pilots that have been in the past, your general fund debt levy, or your general fund levy is, uh, basically about middle of the road, uh, civil and lawyers than what other cities are at. I know when it comes to the overall views, we are definitely higher, but, you know, you have an accident debt service levy, which drives the, uh, where the city falls with others compared to the other. Taking that, uh, overview, comparing general fund levy to general fund levy, which is your basic operating expenses, we have a bunch of.
And I, I, I agree and understand, but that's, when people see their tax, they don't want to see where it's going. Which one's going to, they're just, they're, they're, I don't know, which thing you are, I want to see that.
I don't know, Golden Garden Master Series? Meanwhile, I'm getting clear, it's worth, having the master series, I think. It's very helpful to the, uh, the city that they, you know, we offer, essentially offer the training. I don't believe there's a large number to, to take the master level classes, but we should, we offer those, both, uh, interested and willing to do the next work, that, that opportunity. With the caveat that, you know, there's a payback, uh, if they're learning and so on. But, uh, as far as people having the training and so on, I'd rather see more highly trained individuals than, you know, someone just walking in cold off the street. And I know college degrees don't discourage, you know, you're the smartest guy in the room, but at the same time, you know, I want to make sure that, that you can people, and do this, all the rest.
I, I can't disagree with that. I can disagree with that, but if we had a position in the city that required a master's degree, that would be a criteria that would allow me to make that. We don't require a master's degree for any position. So I just.
All right.
What is that resolution?
Well, that is for.
Training people. It is. It makes them associate with masters. He's part of the area of masters. So we have probably good. We need to partner. So we can actually be engineering. Or while we're using the resources. Then it gets down to whether the timeline we were using with that degree versus, uh, extent that we laid out. Which master's degrees are the most intensive, uh, is hot, hot. Cost versus, uh, value there. Hard to put.
Scanning. All the checkers we know?
I would have a very small, I probably never, I think, uh, it's a good thing we, we are, Ron Ryan. Not perfect example initially, hopefully he's gonna move up the ladder and, uh, send him to sort of, you know, size of your tires.
Something I should milk.
But, I mean, that's, uh, he's a perfect example, we'll keep, he'll get his master's degree and down the road, eventually he'll, he'll move right on up. I think education is a great thing, and we should, uh, know.
All the scholars around?
Disagreeing. But at, but at the same token, we asked Ryan to get that education. And I believe that we asked him, we need to do it. At that point, but this. It needs to be in their field, that's, uh, otherwise, I don't think we should pay for that. I like helping out on the others.
What's it, what's exactly, can we read, Jamie?
I'm sorry, the what?
What, about master's degree, what's it reading exactly right now?
It's just the policy, it's the same as every other type of degree, so I, um, bachelor's, associate's, technical, uh, that would be reversed based on, um, completion.
So the board wish.
On state.
So the board wishes to make that bachelors or associates, maybe to take the motion out of change that, but we don't want credit?
Correct.
How many do we actually have, who we have for a master's?
We just had two complete, you know, right? We each got one complete, and we have two in the same department and one in another department.
So four total?
Four master's.
The, the, or, you know, he has a master's.
Correct.
County Ryan, or Ryan, Ryan has?
No, Ryan doesn't do a master's degree.
So what I'm geared to the board is, it's like the majority wants to have it at bachelor's, associate's. So I need a motion to amend the employee handbook before, to amend the proposed employee handbook, you take it. I see.
Uh, you need to direct staff to put that on the.
I don't need a motion on that.
To a level of, to a level of bachelor's.
So we, we don't need a sub motion on that?
It would be different presentation for students, but it's not necessary.
No, 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 they don't.
Before, before we do make the motion, what about the folks that are in the fight, where we've already.
They commit it based on current. I would say your probably grandfather did, if, if a brother has a, a day, right?
Yes, well, we did everything for, it's much like what we did, um, previously with the F L S A. Ready to utilize them, uh, they don't meet the criteria of the new policy, we can't follow them.
Do you want me to make that motion? That goes for all of us to cap tuition reimbursement at the associate's or bachelor's level. Grandfather isn't employees that are already, you can use on that. Five seconds. Second all in custody. Do you discuss on the motion? See none, all fair to adjourn the I?
Aye.
All those same time?
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Mark Jay. Scully?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Harold?
West?
Ford?
Martin?
Yes.
What, is it the other end?
Uh, sugar.
I know another area of questions we had, we had with Arnold, do you get those straightened out for overtime and everything?
It's just confusing that we have staff here tonight that are hourly, sometimes even if they order it, it's a comp time office.
Uh, actually, we leave those individuals that are here required to be there all the time. But, I, I know you want to.
So anyhow, uh, often we all overtime is mandatory. And I don't intend all of them to do that. I work in a field that you gotta have people there, you gotta have people there to get time to do, or to ease to build a position that leads to these. We have overtime that is voluntary. And if it goes over your certain hours required work, actual hours work, then it gets time to hand. Otherwise it's straight time. In the, in the holiday states that when calculating overtime, vacation, holiday, uh, personal time, all these things are counted as actual hours work when calculating mandatory overtime. Well, mandatory overtime is automatic time after, if they were ten hours, I'd be ten this time, or if they were forty hours at this time, it would not be. The gray area to me is that how can all of our overtime be mandatory? Some of it can be voluntary, I need someone to work an extra shift and I own the police department, you know, to get the volunteer, you know, sign that work. If they go over their best number of hours of actual time work, if we have time to hand, if they don't, if they age, they, whatever, it would be a straight time. If that's losses, consequences. The way.
I think I can clarify that for you. So, the way that the overtime is considered mandatory is based on the need, not on the person or position. Uh, it's based on, um, to take your analogy, they need somebody to fill, um, a slot in the department for a shift that is required, so, they need someone out on the street. Now, it's, it's somebody to volunteer for that, but that particular time is mandatory, that youth is needed. And so the individual may be receiving overtime because they work so many hours, but the individual is required or mandated to work that shift because he's needed there. And the need is based on the department's authorization at the time.
Again, I understand that, but in my profession, we have so many positions that have to be filled. When there is a shortage of personnel, he goes out as a voluntary, we have a kind of able, like rank or grade, whatever you, either call in for it, sign up for it. There's a number of different places that they will not can. But at that point, if you volunteer for it, it's just an additional time. If you get into actual hours work, well, if you work here, it gets by a F L S A, requires time to hand, then you get time to hand. If I had a vacation time in a period where I took one of those, I would not get in all the time to hand, I would have additional funds there.
So my understanding is you correctly in that, uh, in your place of work, that vacation and holiday pay are not considered time to work.
Yes.
We calculate, I understand what you're saying.
And that's, that's what's laid out by F L S A for hours work.
That's not regulated actually by F L S A. They are, um, they say that the entity can require that time be utilized as actual pay or as time work. They don't specify either way, which is why, um, we asked that question. And again, kind of split down the, uh, actually more due day, holiday, vacation, um, and then, you know, land a, uh, pay overtime based on salary standards. So I, you understand what you're saying? Unfortunately, um, you know, the position doesn't specify how this is regulated, um.
So we, but we can specify that.
We can specify it, it's just that we have, have, we do specify, that that time work, you can consider, or that time getting to vacation, uh, or it's just presumably holiday, it's a time vacation. Maybe it's a different holiday, uh, it's considered time work, and then you can be able to ensure that after the fact. That is, that is policy, we didn't, you want to add that.
The, of our stating, you would like to see us make it as your prime works?
That, that's my understanding with that, that way it's aligned to have. I know in the early eighties, when it first came around, for the first services, like, uh, it was all straight time, you didn't get time to hand, when I felt safe enough. Everything over a certain number of hours would be time to hand. They did, and that had to be actual hours work. Well, you don't, the way their regulations, vacation, particularly personal time, is not actual hours work, that's time that you're paid and you're called.
Uh, I, I provided a packet of information to all of you on the twenty seven, uh, it's a guideline given by the O D now revision. Uh, and on that first page, just to clarify, um, they talked specifically about this concern. Uh, and I'm just gonna read it through a, while the F L S A does not set that basis in one way, in another time, these standards. And regulates the employment minors, there are a number of employment practices which the F L S A does not regulate. For example, they do not require, number one, vacation, holiday, severance, or state pay. So that's typically based, and it doesn't regulate those particular, um, instances. So, basically we have to, in my, in my understanding, is that I understand that?
But, but if, if, if part of the verb is when you read it, when they say actual hours work, at a certain line, then you pay time to hand. And between is vacation, strictly holiday time, if they're off duty, or if they're getting paid, but they're off, are not actual hours work. So if you didn't physically come up with a job. So, by that, it doesn't fall into the line of the hourly count for actual hours work. So, I just want to make sure the board understands that we're going, in my opinion, we're going beyond the standard and paying time to hand for every hour worked above. Whether it be actual hours work or not, when they include vacations, it, and, uh, all of that pay in there.
So example could be, let's say we have, please offer, we take a five day vacation, you know, and they're shipped up on Friday night, and we pick that shift up. They've been on vacation for five days, they take that Friday night shift up, they would be given day time after that Friday night shift. Like currently. So I'll be, you know.
In my business, I can be straight. So, is it, is it, is it, are we using funds properly? And will people work it strictly?
Hello, everyone up there, follow man?
Is that, is that due to union contract situations, or is that due to all of them?
Well, man, that's, that's like, you are allowed under contract situations to have things such as we're doing here, as far as your labor pay, where you include it as actual hours work. We don't have a part in here that has, that.
Any more time to go?
Sure, that, and we have another agreement, that's, 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 that's part of the actual hours work, calculated, whether you get it to time to hand.
Nine, I could take personal or vacation one day, you know, or whatever. As long as I have forty hours in, they're counted as hours work, and I can still go overtime, that's that week. But, if I took a week's vacation, then I'd be the very last person on the list that we're at to work that Saturday, during that week.
Right, so in that situation, the management decision trying to determine who would work overtime, could, could this amount of cost to.
Yeah, and otherwise they go, you know, actually we have a rotation, so we know who should work. One skips out, you just skip him, but the next one, but, yes, but. If my Saturday was work and I took that week off, I, I give up that Saturday for overtime, unless nobody else wanted it. So I have forty hours, I take that, I can go on overtime, if I have one or two days off.
And I, and I would say that that, the standpoint that your workers make you pay is the exact same as the city pays. When we're looking at, at somebody's been off for a couple day vacation, and there's manpower overtime that probably, that's taken into consideration, and there's a callback for a water day, or something like that. And that, that we need to have that, uh, some joy, um, wherever that is, there's, uh, Chief Ambrose and the Chief, uh, color. And that's, that's why we phrase it that if it's mandatory, when we look at it, we're taking into all that consideration, because, you know, those dollars is very limited, if the workers are only be able to spend, in a way, of overtime, so.
And just for clarification, the parts of people on vacation, they don't have enough people, so.
Well, you did, you did, kind of a method, everybody, mandatory, most organizations do pay extra, you lost a year, you have no choice, you're gonna be here, you're gonna work. When you get time to hand, you work it. It's just when it's, when it's, hey, I need somebody to work Friday night, uh, two guys to put their hands up, and you says, okay, you can work it, yeah, for the next time, you can work it. That's voluntary. Eventually it gets unclear, whether you pay time to hand, or if you pay time to hand, only if it's a little actual hours work. Just a clarification there. Everybody's good with that?
I'm good with it.
Mine, mine is that in a mandatory, you're not just going to throw in some else spot, spot new people, but where, uh, there's no spots. There are unique elements, and you have to work in a, for five hours upon, that, that's the way we're going to.
And that concluded in that as well, as well as the people that are on call, and, and things like that, so.
Well, I, I, I just, I just feel free that someone volunteer like this, someone else just spots you know. Like this.
So your group, I.
And there lies the off page, it's a condition cost, if we're feeling involuntary overtime versus mandatory overtime, who's saving that time on, on the hours work? People will want to.
Are you?
I agree with that. But, that's a voluntary, one thing that's voluntary, someone would give up their day.
Pro calling your partner.
You work a shift, if you, if you want off, and you can't get that day off, and you can call somebody else to work it, and that's on that person, but that person, who they found is volunteering their time. However, if it's a mandatory thing, you can ask somebody in there. Sometimes we don't, nobody takes a day off, that's a lot, it's not good. So instead of running a pretty main shift, you're running a two main shift.
So it's only when it's required and.
Yeah.
Goes back over to you.
I mean, I can see that in your market, that, uh, I'll start first, five days, and, you know, volunteer to everybody, that would be shit.
Well, and actually, I'm thinking about that, that probably, very rarely happens, the only time that, pretty much happens is in a off duty type of situation. Where you may arrange this a little off duty at the theater, you decide you're not gonna do it, you better find somebody to fill that slot. Because we've told them that you're gonna do that. So I rarely, actually very rarely, we can do that in a trouble situation, I don't think, I don't think we ever do that.
That, that situation you just brought up, it, it would be overtime, if you worked five days, you volunteered, someone else shifts, that's where you work the hours, you know, on the other day.
And I guess if that's, that there's something going on, and I felt that. And I guess if that's, but there would be something going on, and I felt that.
We're talking about when you're this time, for the vacation, whatever.
Two hours, one, two hours off Monday, four, three, two, and volunteer to work, it works out.
And it also gets into depending on how they work out, it's between the two officers, that FLSA allows them to make all trade up. All work for you, and then staying back, slowly, and both, same timeline, or time skipped, this way they, they ask on the cover card, they'll cover for the other person.
That's true.
Isn't that we did the same thing during the policy?
It's, it's, it's supposed to be the same thing, that way, that way it'll be the same.
Simulation with the smaller side that we are, that could, I, I'm familiar with that, and we didn't, we thought of that. Uh, so we could possibly run into problems with that, based on our shifts and police department, and also with our calls, uh, to the public department, which are our primary overtime workers, so. It's a great idea if you turn down our side, um, with that being beneficial for the, for the.
An organization uses a lot of closer, because they have to take part in the day back, but they, uh, just, just range on that. So a lot of departments, it's, 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 it's been a long time. I will be today and then two months later, and then over here. It goes in the book, that what we're supposed to be working for, is just something that they have, but even if they have the time for.
Some of the ability, the flat schedules and all that other stuff, it's a lot of, of course, it's a lot of.
It's just another flexible way of keeping, handling all, very all decisions.
And frankly, um, I can see the potential issue of it. I don't fear a lot of the issues coming, even if overtime is taken, um, I know in the areas where the departments are, most of the large overtime is, currently restricted, stringent on the budget. I'm sure on the larger, I'm here, um, so it's, it's been looked at, it's been discussed, um, and it's kind of a different term, from the second step. Not to say that your, your position doesn't hold true, and just, uh, it is, we have this stuff, and, and. Yeah, definitely.
She was having a little bit of that, we, we have a note taken on there, it's not part of it, is why. And actually, most of our overtime is very under over that.
Do you think, do you think it's there right now, or?
You know, it, it, it's, 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 it has to be wider, it's different. You're dealing with, a lot of courses, different, it's part of, it's part of, it's a different, so it, it, it has to be a little bit, a bit niche.
Unfortunately, I, I'm not sure that the position we will have to review, but those are on the line of the standard. We have to be, I, I hear what you're saying, we'll go to be extremely careful with how we approach that.
Well, you can kind of stipulate what criteria you should, you should determine whether standing towards law.
I agree, I agree, but my, my point is we have to set that bar, you can see for all employees, and that's how we, uh, just so we know that we're not, because I can see that, that was very, uh, but I know what you're saying, I do.
Is there, is there an area that you didn't, uh, make a meeting and just send out an email, I know you don't want to, but.
What is emailed on?
All the press, any thoughts around, send out an email, uh, some information, or information, uh, for anyone.
Uh, you're more than welcome to do it with, like, so many information that I would, would send out, and we got policy that I have already provided, just because, and that, it gives it all in a little button, and it's not, they can shoot into the policy and case law and all of that, that will just blow up your brains up. Uh, and the other, the other thing you can look at is the spreadsheet that I provided, that gives, uh, what other entities do. Um, but I, I do encourage you to, you know, just what we will have provided, just, none of that will change. Um, I kinda, I.
You're telling you have concerns if you really want to.
I don't have any concerns.
Please tell me.
Yeah, you also need to decide, in terms of what the law says, you have the right to decide. On if vacation sick and personal leave should be included in holidays, should be included or not, when we are determining overtime. That is the question that we're asking you, um, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, on the tax. And, and based on the law, that is a policy decision that's unchangeable.
When they all, and, 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 we develop voluntary, the question is whether or not those could be counted as actual hours of work. So we'll ask whether that voluntary, when I next got into actual hours of work, that would be part of our, but, if then you could, you know, pay time and half, you could get three shifts for, for, for us to.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand, I don't see you getting, uh, you get, uh, you get.
Yeah, no, no, we, we, we don't get in trouble unless we specify specific departments, groups, that they think, and, and that's where I, and that's already on my court.
I understand what they were saying, you've got to put your, your, your numbers, or do you want to approve? Colin has, was a couple of operators, a couple, you know, a man with water main break, he just might have like two crews. So, I mean, it's not, where he has the overabundance, fifty, twenty guys. And so, I, I think, it needs to be that way, it is, because of the numbers, that we get, where we have overabundance where you have a pocket, you don't want five over the, or something. I can see that being, it's, it's, we're limited on the number of people, sometimes you just can't.
I think we look at more during the budget, and we can really just look at it, if that system is whole, part of the, and see how they handle it. And that's, I mean, it's more than.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that's maybe more, absolutely, that's something we can talk about during budget time, which adds up now, in the middle of the year, overtime budget, so it's not something that, exactly, exactly, so.
Because Tom will do his overtime, they, they, they do it because, because, because their shifts aren't the same.
Right.
That's what I probably, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I.
I want to clear that, we're talking about, on, on, you definitely don't have a criteria that's going on, right? When you're going up, you're, you're, the criteria has to be, like, even if it's a whole department, but.
And I'll be more than happy to, 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 by the time we get to budget, to say that there's something that, in terms of general standards, or we sit down, and, um, we go right to the time gap.
Is everybody agreed that, that, that Tom, that, that Tom, that's that way?
Yeah, someone liked that Tom question, but, on, on your, uh, water main break, for example, how do you, how do you do that as far as local calls? Um, or, you know, if you got a water main break, do you have certain guys you call, do they, do you, do you say, we're gonna be calling you about the water main break? How, how does that work?
Where are one person each week on call, or, or, like, they, they ask that authority, and you call, who else is working that day? Or, if you're on vacation, that, you're, you're not gonna get called off.
No, I understand that.
The only, the only people that they are available to is, is the people that are working that day. So, and if it's a holiday, and a good point is, is Monday is a holiday, and they have a water main break tonight, and the guys are gonna get the rest of the week, and then tonight is gonna be overtime, you know? Even though Monday is a holiday, and that's the way it should be, uh, so, you know, you can't expect guys to be working all night long on a water main break, twenty degree weather, and straight time, you give them a holiday, that, that doesn't make sense.
I remember two years back, and, uh, probably fifteen years ago, they had a water main break on Thursday.
So, the one guy on local, is, he gets paid for, all the time he's on local?
He has call out there, he gets paid that way, for him, to investigate it, for him, and he gets paid for call out there.
But under that, he just, at, at our, at our, uh, peris, he's gonna be, he's gonna say, welcome down to the.
Everybody has, everybody is on call one week, every seven weeks.
And that will do that, that's a time, do you have, do they have any, that's a long living?
I still have a concern on the, the twelve days, if, um, if it all is the board on their spreadsheet, I thought you guys can do this thing, determine it for a hundred years. They did sixty five hours, um, on a three point, three dollars goes to six nine, standard six nine, and two point three dollars goes to extended sixteen. Which I think they're paying pretty well on the check, and I would do that. So they don't actually get ten, seventy, six point six dollars, you got, end of the year, five divisions, there is just nine, five of them, yeah.
Yes, they actually just changed their policy, um, oh, about a year ago, to go with, um, extended building pay, you know, they just have bank pay now, their banks are on time. So they have a, the city, they're the only city that I've learned of, in that California area, or that was called, to us in state, that had any particular type of situation like that. Um, that they have, they have a particular set amount of time, that they have, okay, four years, and then they have what's called extended building pay, or extended building thing, uh, that they, they can utilize on a, um, situational basis, is that how you understood it, Austin Austin?
I just, I just think twelve, twelve, six years, a lot of, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe not most reasons, but, um, like, say, five, nine, five days, you know? Nine, five days, you're, a day, month, six times, and I don't know, it's always associated, are you doing this twelve days?
Well, while we only encourage people to utilize this time, it is their program setting, and one of the things that, that we always think about is, for those individuals that end up having a long term loan, that, and bankers are already saying that, we're there and used to, you know, to help them out with that time, because we don't have a short term, a long term policy.
Hello, everyone, follow me on that.
If you have to earn your time being worked, being spoiled, whether it be, how you do your yearly, do you gotta go off January, or you go by your anniversary date?
We go by anniversary date.
So say if your anniversary was January, you have your vacation time coming, and then, what if they just give them five days, and that's, uh, they get to use it? Or they could bank, I could bank mine, I can only bank up to thirty days.
Yeah, you can only bank up to nine hundred and fifty hours, that would, is what ours take is, um.
That's saving off of my five that I get, as a January one.
Right, uh, the, the difference is, um, from other entities, we don't pay back six unless you get here a certain period of time, and then you only pay back a percentage. Uh, so that accumulation is truly just on a need base, as, um, as partner to partner, saying, she was telling us that we have a certain use, uh, for that, because we don't have, uh, short or long term disabilities, that's kind of the only policy that we have in place for the individual to bank their time, to use, uh, if they get sick, and then of course, we have a particular donation policy, so that's, that's definitely on long term days, and there's stipulations to that as well, so, does that answer your question, or did I miss it all again?
I can only make a hundred and sixty hours, and that's all I get, only, only get paid for that if I use it, or like, if I had surgery or something like that, I just can't turn around and use it, but I still do. When I make it, otherwise, like, the five days that I could use, about, after I'd maxed my thirty days, you just lose.
Lose it.
And no banking past that, so you're more or less telling them to take five days, instead of building up twelve, and then banking it, because we've had some long term people that we've paid to kind of change that too. After years of banking, all that, and I mean, that, that's good, but.
What we also, I think, that's, that's, that's right, for some.
That's where the percentage is standing, and I'm sure you know that.
Right, but I'm just saying, I still remember that, I just, I just would give them five after anniversary date, and say, here, this is your five days, six times, you can bank it up to thirty, or use them that year, then you build up twelve.
Kind of, or, like, we do with the vacation time, we, we do, I mean, we, we have it along the same lines, we just, definitely more than thirty days, like nine hundred and fifty hours, so.
I would caution the board to be careful about the number of benefits that you're claiming, just to me, we're looking at a lot of benefits that, um, are very beneficial, when you're looking at how the city is, you know, the level of being competitive in the marketplace, and attracting staff, new remaining staff, and, um, I know you're looking at it from a monetary issue, but there are times when it's good to be able to keep those benefits, or adjust them slightly. But you're talking about some, you're making, you're creating adjustments, and it's on the backs of your employees, and at some point, you end up with a malady. And employers are more important to you than that, and I would really caution you, that the, some of the extreme changes that you're, me, I may be looking at. Because, um, while some of you have, um, policies in place, or in your current employers, um, or higher employers, I would caution you and say that, well, while, while that's the way it was in your current place, that doesn't mean that that's the best way for a week. And, um, to continue to try to make adjustments on the backs of your employees, that doesn't settle well with your employees, and it doesn't settle well to me, and it's difficult to do, uh, with higher employees and attracting employees.
Do you have any deal that you said about the six days? Does anyone want to make a motion to adjust the six days?
I'd like to make one to adjust, go back to each, you know, five, you know, six, and six, or do, or do, or do, or do, or do. Looks like they, 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 it's correct.
So your motion is, ten days, and.
I, I don't know, probably, we might start five days a year, but that, it isn't a pretty extreme touch, or, or one act, but, um, six point six, that's about ten days. Um, if we could, if we, can we get, uh, can we set up an extended policy, like, we bring that, where they can accrue that? We have a five, you know, given five days, a month, six weeks, or a year, and then the other five we put in the bank for, for ten days.
It's a compromise.
Yeah, those are two different.
Well, that's what, that's what crew string does with this, they accrue six point six dollars a month, three point three goes to the, um, yearly sick pay, and three point three goes to the extended. So they made this extended, I, to the hospital or something.
But that's a, that's a pool of time?
Is, is that a pool of time?
That's how I understand it, that's how I understand it, the whole time.
Um, you know, that way the time's still there, but it's not, I mean, that's just, you know, all our five days a year, and it's, and you can't bank it, you can't, people are going to use it, they can't, um, so my board of employees take the day off, you know, and I, 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 I.
My only concern was, I don't have a problem with the birthday, if you receive there, and they are allowed to bank up the amount that was lower, what they're allowed to bank, take, if percentages at retirement or after some years of service, was lower than the last year in some place, uh, my only concern is that we have, what our liability was, to those particular, uh, amounts that are banked on there, so that we as a city are prepared to deal with that, and we can take care of that, and, uh, for ourselves, in this situation, and, um, we can give them, you know, our footstep line, for, for me, and our obligations, and so. Well, twelve days means like a lot, it's really not, especially if it helps, it promotes them to keep those days off the books, uh, and the fact that we're not paying up that many of them, if they go thirty years, you know, they could have. If, if, they, 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 or particularly, like, when they're only given nine hundred and fifty hours, I mean, that's a big thing in your city, but they've been a good employee, like, like a mission, so, I think more twelve days, and in your career there, almost nine years, that employee can be, you know, they not taking any million, sure, twelve that, twelve years, and they have to use any, you know, they retire them, getting nine hundred and fifty hours. That's a big thing in this city, just because they were, this boy was screwed off, the bank was, on the way out. That's, that's a big thing in your city, just because they were, this boy was screwed off, the bank was on the way out.
My issue on, um, on that, I think it's very unfortunate that we're, we're looking at the end of the year, and we're going to make a change, and we just really need to be part of the budgeting process. You know, we have a budgeting, we just need to have an, you know, to be a real player. So, my concern about making this, trying to, um, handle this, trying to, um, really want to be part of the budget.
Well, I can tell you that part of the reason why it comes to you this time of year is because when it comes time to budgeting process, we're usually all included in on that, and, and trying to handle that, trying to take on that task of doing a handbook, and the budget at the same time of year, is really difficult to, uh, to put in a target here. So that's, that's the reason why it's, well, okay, we've got that first process, now we're going to work on this, so I can do. And that's why it comes to you that time of year. Although I do absolutely understand your comment about, because, uh, we can impact it pretty swiftly, they may just do it better. It's just for the time you can't, we're not employees, and it's difficult to have to do it. What I understand you're saying.
We'll go back to Oliver Johnson, and they want to make a motion to increase six point six hours a month.
Okay.
Five seconds on the motion to change the policy from what it earlier is to increase six point six hours a month. Anyone else who would make a motion if they want, if they have it, um, to stay with the plan?
Okay. Was there any other areas, anything, anyone, one second? I'll move off, just to go back. Okay, we will move back to ordinance.
Resolution B fourteen dash twelve, first read. It is ordinance adopted in two thousand fourteen, to the Grand Valley Employee Handbook, first reading.
I'm going to accept bill number thirteen, on four, dash one-two, for, for screening, bringing back title and...
I have a question, Oliver, so it says, "Cruel Bill B fourteen dash twelve," for its first reading. Bring it back by following the second reading, five seconds. Senator Arnold, need to session?
Yes, staff will make the appropriate change, uh, from my impressions, and that will be a kind of, kind of...
I have a question, since we may be changing, do we definitely finish out the year of what we got? Like Lamis said, start this January one, next year.
I can tell you from a fiscal perspective, residual savings you have, if I keep changing the handbook right now, and possibly, um, exactly what you're, would be, to, uh, change the handbook now, because what it's doing is, uh, allowing for our staff, for our benefits, a month after they start working in the city. Whereas right now, we start today, they start, uh, that's, that's a thing being necessary, um, if you talk to this lady. And there's some other changes to the handbook that aren't, um, from a fiscal perspective, that we need to be clarified, um, for other agents, for our benefits, exactly. We have our home states down in there, and we have other things that aren't being in there, that we, because of that, we're through, and we, that we might have to adjust. We need to, uh, see if we can better achieve it all at once.
Okay. Anyone else have a question? Dean Dunn, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
All those saying aye, six zero, first vote, first reading. This is resolution R fourteen dash thirty-two, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an extension agreement with ABC Co. for all their services. Resolution fourteen dash thirty-two.
Senator, I'm going to set out, um, the resolution R fourteen, four, thirty-two.
Hi, I'm Oliver Johnson, this is for resolution R fourteen dash thirty-two, five seconds. Senator, does he, need to session?
Uh, Chief Laborist, just to confirm with you, that this is the last year of extension on this contract?
Correct, it was originally a three-year contract, but this is the last year on that. Probably mid, mid next March, uh, next year, two thousand fifteen, we will spread out, we'll get, uh, data and location process closer, and have all that ready to go, for when the contract is required. Not give us too much to worry about.
Dean Dunn, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
All those saying aye?
Six zero, aye.
That side is city attorney's court?
City Attorney's Court, aye.
That side is city legislator, staff's court?
Uh, Chief Laborist, you're the night?
Uh, yes, Mayor Board, next meeting, if anybody's interested, about thirty minutes, uh, prior to the start of the meeting, until the start of the meeting, I will have one of our control units out front here available for, uh, any of you that wanted to look at. We now have all of our, um, in-car computers, as well as our on-prem, key taken installed in all vehicles. Just so if anybody's interested, and like to see how that works. Pretty, uh, it's a great deal, officers love it, they get to stay in their cars instead of having to come back inside, uh, the office, and right to the fortune to do everything now, right in the vehicle. So, other than getting a rest, going to the bathroom, maybe eating some, uh, dinner, lunch, or whatever it might be, they can pretty much stay in the vehicle, and what have they just done?
Um, Tim, did I make a comment? I asked Tim tonight to, uh, please make a comment to the accusations that were made earlier tonight, and I wanted to give him an opportunity to reflect.
Yeah, um, the, uh, the female that was up earlier, is, um, comments about field, about not part. You know, parts of recreation field, we have comments on this case, but, and weather dictates so much of what we do, whether it's sports, whether it's pool, rentals, swimming classes, shelter rentals, um, and we accounted very much, I think, quite literally. And, um, our, our maintenance staff are, are faced with the task of trying to get infield red for games at night. Um, and depending on how much rain we get, that can be quite a bit of work, um, in giving field rooms, filling in the load spots around home plate, and, uh, around the bases, and, and so forth. Um, our protocol for fields, we have three in contact with weather, there's no game, we make it, the city is like four p.m. And we update our rain outlines, our front desk staff, uh, we send a text to D P A to let them know whether or not games are going to be played. And we do it at four o'clock, because we have teams coming from uptown that kind of need to know, some of them are games before they're six p.m. You know, whether they're coming to travel or, or not. And, and nine times out of ten, we're having to make decisions on what still looks like four, but not knowing what it will look like at six. And sun, air temperature, wind, all plays a big part on how a field's going to respond after it rains. Um, at four o'clock, we felt like all four fields on Nunn are to be played at about six. And tonight, and of course I wasn't out there, but it's about the time the meeting was starting, it's about the same time the games are being run away on Nunn. Um, we were a little concerned with field three and four, we had some water staining on the first base side on field three, and I think some spots on, yeah, um, so no staining wanted, still, still damp, um. But, uh, anyway, long story short, uh, with the field three and four, just drive away, we're a little close, and, um, they decided upon themselves that they wouldn't have the games on field six or four. Field one and two were playable, and they had those games, and that was kind of, you can see how close we were, being able to be in on all four fields versus, versus Nunn. And every now and then that happens, and there are times that we'll make a decision, and we'll call games at four o'clock, and we'll have coaches or parents run out to field six, and let's see play at the field, or at least in their mind, what it's play. Or they'll just call, and see why we called games, because the field's to play at at six. So oftentimes, mother nature is not real nice to us, and we're caught between a, a rock and a hard place to try to make a decision like that to, to do. And, you know, I was not out there, um, and they may feel a little too wet, and they weren't paid what they should, and that, and sometimes that just happens. Um, she did make mention to my daughter, and I do coach, um, my daughter, well, well, both, I have two, I have three girls, but two of which play softball, and I do coach, um, their teams. They were scheduled to play on Armstrong East tonight. Armstrong East has a different infield material, it's river silt, it's thin, does not respond well to rain, holds water, doesn't dry as fast, as the aggregate line, uh, line builds up much, much part. Um, there were no games scheduled on field two tonight, so I had to give the bear, who was here earlier this evening, to see if we could do those two games on Armstrong East, field two, because probably everybody was showing, it wasn't there yet. And just so happened that my daughter's community is one of the two teams that was originally scheduled on Armstrong East. So basically, we didn't bump any games, we did those two games out on field two, field two was available, but just so happened that I could do two, was one of the field two. But I just wanted to clarify with you all tonight, when we have weather like this, whether we call games or don't, we're always looking pretty deep by the public, and, and we can't get right, that is why everybody, all the time, all the way, it's the best we can with time, and I just wanted to throw everybody in on, on, what actually occurred, so, I'll call it.
Um, also, Tim Murphy, is your report for the community development, Tim?
Uh, Mayor Board, I have two things, uh, one, we had our annual community development event last Thursday. I had to, she was talking about weather, kind of later on weather, originally scheduled for, um, Armstrong Park. Saw the chance for rain, so we did the pavilion, and then even then, the grass and everything was still wet, but the rain basically had self-fired. We had everything under, uh, can't be there, pavilion, so the turnout wasn't quite as good as we had in the past. Still pretty good, I'm glad everybody had a good time, went to keep raining that we hadn't had before. Um, the paint cleaning and the photo booth seemed to be a big that we did. Um, so, we've actually already had a meeting this week, uh, Tom was on, and was working a couple of staff members, to see, you know, what we can kind of do for next year to go ahead and make that bigger, um, and kind of confer any weather that we might have to. So, a few weeks came out, and it was still a pretty good event. The other thing is the Eastern Jackman County Yard Waste Facility. You guys should be fairly aware of that, it is currently, I think this is the third, uh, last weekend was the third weekend that it was open. Uh, it's open Saturdays, uh, from eight a.m. to four p.m. And it's located there, Paintville, Cerritos, basically, you just go north on, uh, Fugon Cardine, and then go east on, uh, Paintville. Cerritos is the more south road, and it's right there on the, the northwest, on the intersection, it's a Jackman County lot. It's empty, it's empty then, looks pretty nice, if you have time, you might drive out there, and we're trying to get the word out as much as possible. We're paying on magnets, we got emails, uh, if you go on channel seven, put the link on our website, and, uh, and we're all putting up those fire in the water, so... And everybody's looking for those to take that, so, um, have it. They still have not, because, I don't know, Mayor Todd, has they been with you, I know, Jackson County's...
Huh? Thursday?
Yeah, Jackson County.
It's Thursday? I think it's the Thursday, I had it on my calendar, it's Thursday.
Basically, we had our last meeting with, uh, with Rain Go Grove and Jackson County, Jackson County P R people.
Yeah, that's Rain Bar, we hear Ryan wants to be, um, they, every day like nine thirty, I think.
What that, you know, right?
I'm pretty, I'm a little positive Ryan wants to be about it, so, you know.
Mine now.
On my calendar, Thursday. About Thursday, I'll be down. I'll be going out to the yard, that's the place, because I'm going to go away.
We'll do feature.
With a pair of scissors, I'll go on there, so I'll wait.
That's what we have to do.
Uh, next up is Oliver, first time, Oliver Arnold?
Checking on the, uh, West Gates meeting, uh, uh, from the, uh, September eighth, uh, that people July.
Yeah, yeah.
We only have one there for the recognition.
Yeah, did you get all this? Good.
I have, I have, I'm not an office committee to coordinate that with.
Yeah, of course, I, I, I'm making my statement, so, I guess, you know, we can, so...
Yeah, so if you're not having email, you have to have, they need to be notified by Thursday and September.
Correct.
And then, once we have that, I don't believe in all reservations, twenty-six, thirty, fifty of us. James goes down, he goes, "Oh, bless his sins," it's just, it's in the defendants, after, well, the person's name.
They're my group.
Thanks for the line, that was my next question.
Yeah. Registration, registration, and social hours at sixty a.m., followed by dinner at seven.
Um, another thing I'm going to bring up, so that note, that we launched a bill that is part of our community that's sent. He was part of our, uh, chief of our department, or, probably, he part of, sent that, um, to our district. So, it talks about his family there, that he can send something to the services or something, recognizing him to the service part of it. I have another comment brought to me about butterfly trail out there, uh, in the heat. You know, we have all kinds of bags around there for people walking, animals, and nobody's walking the heat. I know we talked about this problems before, uh, out there on the trails, and a discussion of the cutouts of the wind, with black plastic bags, or whatever some people use, that, that looks like a predator next to the, the lake and stuff, that will get the geese to move on, and we, I don't know, we tried that before, maybe something to try now.
We can, we can definitely take a look at that, I, I know we've actually spoken, we've heard part of the conversation about it, and I tell you, they don't have a quick fix or a solution, and they need to get them, they need to get them, they want to, so we're moving to these questions. But, uh, but we can definitely look into that, and try, and try some of the, the other suggestions that, uh...
I think one of the adjustments was, not shotguns, but, something loud.
They have, they do have, they, they, they used an airport port, where it shot out of a shotgun, but it's a firecracker.
It was a microphone.
Might be able to, or if I held it back, yeah.
Anyway. Over, long view, they're also, they're pretty successful keeping these out of their, long view, they, they have still excellent dogs, with, uh, white plastic animals, you know, the dogs who also, it's pretty successful in keeping them out.
Issue brought to my attention, and I know we talked about it before, something I need to readdress, and look at, see if we can, we definitely have it. Or let's, or let's, people can just say, you know, I just want to, I just need to speak. I'll be happy to meet, for the purposes.
I think that's easier, stick around for that.
Oliver, what do you?
I want to thank everybody for the cards, and flowers, and food, you know, sent to down. On my father's deathbed, I want to thank all of you very much.
Oliver, thanks.
Uh, just a quick thank you to Ryan and Ken, we, um, had a house fire, we wanted to go on Ryan's road, that's, that's, and, 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 and...
to get on Ryan's road, that, that, and, and they have to work that out for them, find out who to get all of, to keep the wheels in motion, if people want to get, get the house moving, maybe, and, uh, appreciate your time, definitely, that, that's all, Ryan, I appreciate it.
Oliver Johnson. Next up, Mayor's report, I have just one thing, try to find that, correct, right there. Boom, the long time it kept going off. Uh, next time, executive session, we do have a D under legal, we do have a D executive session under legal action, so I'll let her hand motion to adjourn, so that's the session. Just, Oliver, does it, does it, second? Second, Oliver, safer, need a session? None, all bearers, say aye? All those they sign, Oliver Arnold?
Yes.
Oliver, Oliver, does it?
Yes.
Oliver, does it?
Yep.
Oliver, does it? All right, all very good, next.